On May 28th, this is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Sandwich Board of Appeals. Please stand for the Pledgeable.
... to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The Board of Appeals currently has five regular members and two alternate members. The Board of Appeals can have up to four alternate members. Any decision of this Board requires a two-thirds vote. Two-thirds of five is four. If only four members vote, the vote would have to be unanimous. If five members vote, one member could dissent. The Board asks that if anyone is recording this meeting, please notify me. No recordings. Okay, so noted. All right. Old business first on the agenda is special permit number 19-04, zero Bucasek Road and zero Shom Road, map 37, parcels one and two, the Adventure Park at Heritage Museums and Gardens LLC, special permit continued for the purposes of operating a ropes course as a small-scale outdoor recreational facility pursuant to section 4150 of the zoning bylaw. Last meeting, if any of you were here or you read, it was quite lengthy and we had a lot of people on both sides that offered their opinions. And we're going to have the applicant speak, but to any new information that's come before us. But we ask that if anybody wants to speak, you're more than welcome to, but if it's something you've already said, or something somebody else has already said, let's try and keep it to new information and let's try and keep it in under five minutes apiece. So, and then we did just-
Do you want to mention that Eric won't be here tonight, but he'll listen-
Yeah, Eric Van Busker is a regular Board member. He's not able to make it tonight. Jerry Nye is sitting in for him, and he has listened to the tape from the last session and signed the affidavit that is required. We did, since the last meeting, we have received some letters of opposition and some letters of, you know, in favor of, and we've also received some additional letters from Attorney Mello and from Attorney Cox from the Heritage. And we've all had time to review and take a look at that, and that'll generate some more questions. So, let us begin.
Thank you.
Can you please clarify one point? I assume that you also, the Board also received copies of the email to which the letters were attached. I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, I just said that.
No, I knew, I understood you receiving materials. I wasn't sure if you got the copy.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. For the record, my name is Lysla Cox. I'm an attorney with Nuttall McLennan &amp; Fish here in Hyannis on behalf of the applicant. Joining me this evening to my right is Ann Scott Putney, the President and CEO of Heritage Museums and Gardens, and to her right, Bauman Azarm, who's the CEO of Outdoor Ventures. In addition, on our team, Pat Dunford from VHB, our traffic engineer, who you heard from last time, is present tonight. Brian Lovieri from Horsley Witten Group is present here tonight, and Heather Ross of Cape Cod and Islands Appraisal Group from Barnstable is here tonight. She was the one who prepared the market impact assessment that we submitted with the application materials and is prepared tonight to respond to Mr. Killian's question regarding the data sets, and I'll have her speak in just a moment. First, I wanted to follow up with the Board on a few items since the initial public hearing on May 14th. As the Chair referenced, we submitted a letter dated May 24th that had, I would say, primarily three components. The first component was, in the letter, clarifying that this use is not an amusement park within the meaning of your zoning bylaw or within the meaning of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts regulations. To me, it is very clear that by any stretch of imagination, this is not an amusement park within the meaning of either of those documents. And so, between the testimony that we provided previously, as well as elaborated upon in my memorandum, we have outlined that this is not an amusement park. I'm not intending to go into that in any detail again tonight because I think we've covered it now between the hearing and the memo, but obviously, if the Board has any questions or concerns, we would like an opportunity to respond to that question. The second component of the May 24th memorandum reiterates our position that the tree platforms are not structures within the meaning of the zoning bylaw, and I do want to spend a moment here. So, at the site visit, the Board members had the opportunity to view the platforms that are in the trees. And as you saw, each platform sits on wedges surrounding, which are surrounding the tree. The platforms are there by compression. There is nothing attached to the trees. There are no bolts going into the trees. There are no nails going into the trees. There are no screws going into the trees. Rather, the method of suspending the platforms is, in contrast, we suggest, to the definition of structure within your zoning bylaw, which expressly requires attachment to something on the ground or a fixed location on the ground. Here, the elements, the platforms, are not attached to the ground or on anything to the ground, and therefore, they cannot be structures within the meaning of your zoning, excuse me, zoning bylaw. Moreover, previously, the town also did not consider them to be structures when this project received a building permit back in 2014, 2015. I have given some thought as to what I think is intended by the language within your zoning bylaw that talks about a structure being anything constructed or erected, the use of which requires attachment to something on the ground. I believe that language is intended to regulate things like second-floor decks, which are attached to buildings that are located on the ground, or porticoes, or roof overhangs, or awnings, all things that are attached to something that's constructed on the ground. Here, the platforms are sitting in the trees by compression. They're not even attached to the trees. They're sitting on wedges that lean against the trees. Now, I did see the memo that, or the email, rather, that Attorney Mello submitted that included a draft letter that we had prepared back from 2014 that got publicly released. And it did indicate at the time that our view was that the structures, these platforms, could be structures within the meaning of the bylaw. I will say, ultimately, the Building Commissioner disagreed and issued a building permit confirming and indicating that they are not structures within the meaning of the zoning bylaw. And that memo, frankly, was intended to address whether or not they were buildings within the meaning of the bylaw requiring compliance with the general setback requirements. So, ultimately, I stand here today believing strongly that within the meaning of your bylaw, the tree platforms are not structures, and that is our position. And frankly, the town agreed with us last time when this project went through the building permit process. Finally, the last thing that was included in the letter that was submitted by our office on May 24th was a color graphic that was requested by the Board, which shows the location of the ropes courses on the property. And each ropes course is shown as a different color in that graphic. In addition, in the middle of last week, Mr. Vitacchio contacted me requesting, and I think it may have come from a Board member, that we submit historic daily attendance data for both Heritage Museum and Gardens and the Adventure Park. And I am going to submit that. It took some time for us to pull this together, so I will submit that tonight to the Board.
Are you going to give us a summary of-
Yes, I will give you a summary. As you'll recall, first of all, we did provide the Board with our application, the annual attendance numbers at the Adventure Park. So, this is a breakdown of daily attendance numbers over a period of two years. And you'll see there are two documents that are attached to the packet that's being handed out. At the top, the documents indicate 2017 daily attendance data and 2018 daily attendance data. So, this is two years' worth of attendance data, and there are three columns. So, the first column on the left in yellow shows the date. The second column, which is in pink or peach, are the attendance data from Heritage Museums and Gardens. And the third column, which is shown in blue, are the attendance numbers at the Adventure Park. Some observations about this information. First, I want to make clear that these numbers do not reflect the number of vehicles or cars that are coming to either facility. Rather, they are the number of individual climbers or attendees, climbers at the Adventure Park, attendees at the Museum and Gardens. Secondly, I want to make clear that these attendance numbers are spread out over the course of a day, and they're not numbers that happen all at once at either location.
How many hours is that?
It depends on the day. So, in the summer, and Bauman, correct me, generally, the parks open 8:00 a.m.
Eight till, generally, 8:00 o'clock, till it gets dark.
So, roughly a 12-hour day?
Correct.
Right. And for Heritage, Ann, just correct me, the hours are less. So, it's shorter hours, 10 to 5, shorter hours, and as you'll see when you look through the numbers, more attendees. At the Adventure Park, the number of climbers is regulated, so by a couple of factors. First, the number of harnesses that are available, and we could previously testify that there are 120 harnesses that are available. That's a maximum number of climbers. In addition, there's a reservation system that the Adventure Park has to limit the number of climbers that can happen at any one time. And they take the reservation system very carefully and with a lot of consideration. They want the experience not to be one where you're crowded, or feeling like you're rushing in the trees, but that you have a moment and you're out in the elements without being crowded by other climbers. So, this is very important. And they have, over the years, adjusted the number of people that they have, starting at any one given time, to make sure that there is adequate pacing between the climbers. Another observation, the Adventure Park, in response to a question that I asked, has informed me that typically, reservations are made in groups of four people. Again, so when you look at these numbers, these are reservations that are typically coming in four at a time. Finally, the overall observation, when looking at Heritage Museum and Gardens versus the Adventure Park, you can see that Heritage Museums and Gardens is a significantly higher generator of attendees than the Adventure Park. And we're happy to try and answer any questions, if you have any, on those numbers. Finally, before I introduce Heather Ross, I wanted to wrap up on a couple of things. First, we believe that we have demonstrated, and it is clear, that the Adventure Park is a recreational use. It is similar to a climbing wall, which is included as an example in your zoning bylaw of a recreation facility. And in fact, the Superior Court, when it previously determined that this was not dominantly an educational use, found this to be dominantly a recreational use. We believe we have demonstrated, and it is clear, that this is a small-scale use. Most of the criteria contained in section 4151 of your zoning bylaw is there to ensure that outdoor recreation uses are small in scale. These include limits on the amount of square footage for any structures, limits on the number of stories for any structures, requirements of a larger lot, which, again, goes right to scale, limits on the amount of impervious surfaces, and limits on spectator seats, the number of spectator seats. This project meets each of those requirements. We have demonstrated, with the materials we've submitted and the testimony provided, that this project does not result in any substantial harm or derogation. We've provided a traffic study showing minimal impacts. We've provided an economic analysis showing no impact and rising property values in the surrounding area. We've provided a noise study showing no impacts from the adjoining residential property, which is the Highview Condominiums. And this project has virtually no impact to the environment itself. There's very little clearing, and the health of the trees and the environment is critical to the experience. Finally, I wanted to respond to the comments that this is not the right place that we heard, or that this is inconsistent with the neighborhood. We respectfully disagree with those comments and offer that this outdoor recreation use is wholly consistent with the surrounding land uses, which include Heritage Museum and Gardens. You heard testimony from a Board member talking how this is very consistent with Heritage's mission. Shom Road, Shom Crow State Forest, which has hiking, biking, and camping, all outdoor uses, like, as is proposed, and the Hundred Acre School. The closest residential use to this facility is a quarter of a mile away, and it is substantially buffered by mature vegetation from the Adventure Park. We therefore believe it meets the criteria for the granting of the special permit. And what I'd like to do now is invite Heather Ross to come up and respond to Mr. Killian's question and any other questions that the Board may have about the impact analysis she prepared.
Can we just speak for a moment about this submission?
Sure.
This is actually very helpful because these are similar things to discuss.
Mr. Killian, would you please speak on the mic? Thank you.
The hours in the wintertime, when you have, you know, a very large group of people, what are the hours of operation for that period of time?
Are you talking for Heritage or for the Adventure?
Well, I mean, the Adventure Park is closed in the winter, but you have large numbers on the weekend. I mean, these numbers here, obviously, over a long period of time, the ones in the wintertime, is that sort of a small period of time? I know a lot of this is nighttime activity, so-
Those are the gardens, the glow.
Yeah, so it's probably like a three-hour window or somewhere thereabouts, or longer?
Four hours. Four hours. Four hours.
So, are you looking like on 11:24, 11:25?
Yeah, all the ones in the winter.
So, that's Garden's Glow?
Yeah.
I have a question, similar to what Jim just asked. I think the max that the Adventure Park had was 370 on July 6th. Okay. Granted, it wouldn't be equally 370, but that would be about 30 people per hour. Have you ever attained the 120 max that your course could hold at any time?
Yes, actually, there's, we do have 120 harnesses, but in general, there's no more than 110 that are actually within the area. Well, even less than that, because there are always people getting harnessed and always people coming down. There are a lot of people that are taking their harnesses off, so there's really not 110 people ever in the trees at the same time.
Could I further respond to that, too? I had spoken with the park operator regarding that particular number, the 370. She had told me that that day, that is the largest number that they had, and that the course was too crowded. And so, following that day, they actually made changes to the reservation system to reduce the number, so that there wouldn't be so many people starting at any one given time, so that there wouldn't be 370 for the max.
Again, I know that 370 was over the course.
It's over a period of time, but that was the day that was a little crowded, and so they adjusted the reservation system following that event.
And what's the average per day?
It really differs on the season, but in July-
In the higher season.
Well, a good Saturday, nice sunny Saturday in July or August, we might get 250 now.
But that's a weekend, during the week, it's going to be half that?
Absolutely. Yep, somewhere between 100 and 200 max, so 150 would be a good number.
And you mentioned that four people is the average reservation size?
Right.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Maybe actually just- Do you want to introduce someone? Is this on? Okay. Good evening. My name is Heather Ross, and I'm a real estate appraiser. I've worked in this market for over 30 years, and know Sandwich and the Cape very well.
My question last week, two weeks ago, was relative to the time that you took the samples. You know, some of them were three years, some of them were six years.
Yes.
And actually, if you could sort of answer that question in the scope of how you put the entire assessment together, that would be very helpful.
Okay. Should we just go section by section?
Certainly.
Okay. So, in the impact analysis, the focus of the assignment was to identify whether or not there had been any diminution in market value due to the ropes course at the Heritage Museum. Now, the first set of data I looked at was the two condominium projects. Those were relevant because they're proximate, the museum, and I was able to find sufficient data from 2014, which is prior to the installation of the ropes course, to the end of 2018. So, that was a five-year period to see what were the sales and resales in those two specific condominium developments. Now, one of the significant features about that is that these units existed or were built after the museum was established, and they're also proximate the highway, which generates, I would say, a measurable noise, a measurable negative noise influence for that location. Okay? So, in the sale price of each of those units is implicit those two factors. So, they already knew about the traffic to the museum, and they already had this noise factor from the highway. So, then I set the timeframe from 2014, prior to the installation of the ropes course, to the end of 2018, which would track a price per square foot for units in both those developments to see was there any increase, was it stable, or was there a measurable decline? So, that was the timeframe, set the criteria for the data research. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. So, in the first two studies, each condominium development was looked at separately to see, did the decline or increase or stabilization of values in both those projects, were they consistent? And that, the data showed that they were consistent, and in fact, the values increased on a per-square-foot basis, and it demonstrated that there were no decline in values. Then, with the same data from 2014 to 2018, I discovered sales and resales of units in both those projects. And a sale and a resale of the same unit is very significant because you have identical features in that specific unit, whether it has a view, whether it's close to the highway, not close to the highway, does it have a garage? So, there's a higher level of uniformity. So, in comparing the sales and resales, I was restricted to specific units that had sold prior to the installation of the ropes course to post-installation. So, let me see. I think that's on page nine. So, here we have a-
Just to stop, when you say resale, you're talking about a unit that transactions were multiple within that time period? The same unit?
The same unit. So, if you look at page nine of the impact study, I found four sales and resales. And the significant thing about this study is that there's a lot of features that were identical. Now, if the unit had been upgraded, or there had been physical features regarding each of these four units that had changed, I reviewed the assessor's property record card to see if a building permit had been taken out, and I reviewed the MLS listings to actually see the interior photographs of each of these units, where they were available. So, I was able to identify, were there any changes between the first sale and the second sale? So, like, for number one, we've got Highview Drive, and that sold in 2014, and it sold again in 2018. And we saw, for instance, with this sale, the annual increase was 5% based on an overall increase of 20%. So, that's how I took this, this was our third data set, and that's how I took this and dug into the data to see what was the activity between sales and resales. So, that's why some of these sales were like, well, let's see. One of them is in 2012, right? And the second, the resale was in 2015, and that 2015 date was after the ropes course had been installed. So, from this viewpoint, it was a way of trying to see, was there any market reaction to the installation of that ropes course based on sales and then resales? Okay? So, that's that data set. And then, at the end of, at the bottom of that page, there's a summary of the results of the analysis of the Highview condos, the Hilltop condos, and the sales and resales. And you can see there were measurable increases in value, which demonstrated, in fact, there was no decline. Okay? So, let's-
How did that compare with other areas?
With other areas?
Property size.
That is a good question. So, I have another piece of data here from the Banker &amp; Tradesman, also known as the Warren Group, and that is the data compilation company out of Boston that compiles sales and resales of properties throughout Barnstable Counties and in each town. So, for instance, and I'm going to bring this up to you. Okay. Because this wasn't included in this impact study. This will show you the condos in Sandway. Now, this is general data, right? This is all the sales. So, it's not as specific as the impact study, but this gives you a general idea of what was happening in the market as a whole for residential condos in Sandway. And it shows there was an overall increase over this four-year period of 35%, but also an 8.4% increase annually. So, even though that number may not be specific to the condominium projects that are booked at the museum, it's still demonstrating that the increase in values in those condominium projects is consistent with increases in the market as a whole. Okay? So, that's where this general data links in with what we found in those specific projects. Does that make sense?
Sure. Can you give that to the clerk for us? Thank you.
Can you go, so that was one, that was Highview?
Yes.
Yes, it was, it was both the condominium projects showed an increase in value.
Yeah, one was at 6.25, the other 5.75.
Correct. Yeah. And it was averaged, it was averaged over that, because that kind of gives us, that's telling us a story.
Okay. What about on the single-family dwellings?
Okay. So, let's look at, great question. And so, I looked at the sales on Pine Street. I looked at what had sold and resold on Pine Street. Now, there were fewer sales, so I was limited to the data that was available, and the earliest sale I had was in 2015. So, this analysis is different from these first two analyses that were done on the condominium projects, because I didn't have any sales that were significantly prior to the installation of the ropes course. However, if that ropes course had a measurable diminution on property values, we would see it between 2015 and 2018. And since Pine Street is one of, it's the main access road into the museum, from my analysis standpoint, I believe that there would be a measurable decrease in property values on Pine Street if, in fact, the increase in traffic resulted in a diminution to privacy, was there an increase in noise, right? And we know as residents on Cape Cod, we have the summer influx of tourists, so we have a certain impact in terms of the increase in traffic almost everywhere. But in terms of Pine Street, in 2015, the average price per square foot was about $240 a square foot. In 2016, it was about 260, and then, no sales in 2017, and then in 2018, it was about 263. Now, the increase per year was about 2.25%, so we see not as measurable as in the condominium projects. However, the significant thing about this study is that it didn't show a decline. Now, 2014 and 2015 was the bottom of the recession. We still had an oversupply of inventory on the market, and it began to be absorbed. So, what would we assume? We would assume that the values would remain probably fairly stable, but in this case, we saw, yes, there was a little bit of an uptick. So, in my mind, my conclusion was, the increased traffic did not have a measurable diminution on- the condominium projects. However, the significant thing about this study is that it didn't show a decline. Now, 2014 and 2015 was the bottom of the recession. We still had an oversupply of inventory on the market, and it began to be absorbed. So, what would we assume? We would assume that the values would remain probably fairly stable, but in this case, we saw, yes, there was a little bit of an uptick. So, in my mind, my conclusion was, the increased traffic did not have a measurable diminution on value. There was not a huge number of sales of people leaving that street, and we would have seen a decrease in the price per square foot. So this, the timeframe, coming back to your comment on this, the timeframe on this was limited by the relevant and consistent data that was available in terms of the actual sales that had happened on Pine Street.
What about in terms, with, to speak to the sales, the days on market? Did you look at that to see if that got longer during this period of time?
No. The issue of the days on market, now that's relevant, because in 2013, 2014, and 2015, there was an oversupply of inventory on the market, in most market segments. It did result in longer marketing times, and it did result, in some cases, in people having to discount their properties to shorten up that sale, sale period. However, in analyzing this data, the longer marketing time is implicit in the sale price. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay. So that's why this unit of comparison had a higher level of reliability, because a lot of these smaller features were actually incorporated in the sale price, which resulted in the price per square foot.
And then you mentioned the, the inventory level, and I think they measure that in, in days of inventory or something like that?
Usually that's measured in what you mentioned earlier, the days on market.
Yeah. So how has that changed from, well, you said it's sort of flattened out in 15 to, say, 18?
Yeah. 15, well, what we've seen from 2015 to 2018 is the inventory was gradually absorbed, and we started to see asking prices increase and sale prices increase. So on that sheet that the assistant now has, you'll see that the average sale price began to increase, because it's, this is the normal dynamic of the market. When there's an oversupply, and we all know this from owning real estate and having homes here, as the inventory increases and there's more competition, we have to price a property more competitively in order to sell it within a certain timeframe. So those features are actually included in these, this price per square foot analysis.
And then, lastly, the, you did an analysis based on location to recreational uses?
Oh, yes. Yeah, that was the, that was the final analysis. And the purpose of this part of the study was to see whether there was any negative influence in the market to outdoor recreational facilities. And, for instance, so the basis of this study was to take a sale of a property that was next door to a school that had an outdoor field, or I think I have one that's next to a town baseball field, an outdoor use. So it compared a property in similar kind of neighborhood without the recreational use and a sale with the recreational use. And adjustments were made to the sale that was not proximate the recreational use to take out any amenities that were superior or inferior. And the resulting adjusted value correlated with the sale price of the property that was located next to the recreational use. So in this study, it's sort of, it expanded out the whole IMPACT study and brought it out into the bigger market and said, okay, well, what about, how do buyers react to being next to a school with a ball field? And actually, one of these sales, which I thought was quite good, I'm going to cite the page, it was 17. It was on Cranberry Circle, and that's next to the Barnstable High School campus. And there they have a middle school, a high school, and that is a very intensively used outdoor, outdoor recreational amenities. They have numerous tennis courts, three to four ball fields, a football field. And so the sale that was used in this comparison was at 122 Cranberry Circle, which was next to the high school recreational amenities. And then that was compared to a house that was sold inside that neighborhood that was not next to the school. And the result was that there was really no, no measurable difference between the two locations.
Is that your general observation? You've obviously been doing real estate for a few years. And do you find that property located near these type of uses suffers any type of value diminution?
Well, that is a general comment.
It is.
And, in my experience, general comments can be very misleading, especially on Cape Cod, because our neighborhoods are very segmented, and, for instance, in this particular case, these types of properties are in a market segment where a family might want to be right next to the school. And, and so the buyer motivation may be different. Some folks are fine with, for instance, buying a condo in one of those High View next to the highway. They may not care about the traffic noise. Another buyer may not buy in that condo project, because they don't want to be next to the highway. So that's where we really have to drill down into the information and really see what is, what's happening with buyers, and how do, how are they making their purchase decision? And where do they place the value?
So, to answer my original question about the time of the study?
Yes.
It was based on the available data that you had?
Yes, it was, it was based on available data, but also, the primary purpose of the IMPACT study was to identify the difference between what was happening in the market before the installation of the ropes course and what was happening after. And based on that purview, I went into the market and found the relevant sales as they were available.
Okay. Thank you very much.
That answered my question.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from board members to the applicant?
While, while we have the applicant, Mr. Brice?
Yes.
Conversation about the definition of structures. And is your opinion that the platforms within trees meet the town's definition of structure?
My opinion is that the definition that's given to us in the protective zoning bylaws defines what, that these are the structures, these platforms in the trees.
And of course, these components consist of a lot of different products. It's wood, it's cables. So in your opinion, then, a tree with a piece of cable around it going to another tree would be considered a, a structure? Is that correct?
Cable in and of itself, I would not see as a structure, but in this case, I believe there are tunnels and lakes where people crawl through them to get from one tree to another. I would consider that to be a structure.
Okay, so if we had a, as I said, a tree that just had a cable to support something else, you would not consider it a structure?
That by itself wouldn't, and a good example would be a clothesline. If you just had a clothesline, that obviously would not be considered a structure, but in this case, you have a combination of bridges, of platforms, and cables that contribute to these platforms and bridges, so I believe they would be a structure.
So a cable between two trees with devices suspended from it would not be a structure, would it be?
In the case of supporting the bridges that cross from one tree to another, I would see them as a structure.
What about elements that don't have, isn't a bridge? Like I've seen elements, they just have ropes hanging from the cables in between a tree. Would that be considered a structure in your definition?
Probably not in accordance with what's here in the bottom.
Okay, so it's specifically anything that's part or affixed near the tree or to the tree?
Yeah, I think it's, I think basically what it says is that anything constructed or erected, the use of which requires fixed location on the ground, or attachment to something on the ground. In this case, the structure is attached, the platform, the structure of the platform is attached to the tree. And that includes all buildings, mobile homes, et cetera, things that are pertinent here. And there are exclusions, and the exclusions are not including pavement, usual lawn accessories, fences, retaining walls, six feet in height or less. They're not, to be considered, in this case, we don't have those here.
So do you have any comment in terms of previous conclusions that the building department may have drawn that these were not structures?
Sure. Be with me if you would. As far as the building department determining, determining that they were not structures, I would quote from my predecessor, Paul Spiro, who was intimately involved with this project from the word go. And Paul wrote, "With the aforementioned in mind, it would be my interpretation that the tree platforms, although only 12 inches in height, are structures." In fact, they agreed to that interpretation. That's what the building department's previous position, as I understand.
And how did that work with setbacks, including the seat, the street and the side setback? You didn't take any of that into consideration?
The setbacks, the front setbacks would probably have been 30 feet, I believe, at the time. I believe some of these structures are less than that at this point, and I can't comment for how my predecessor interpreted that.
Because there was, there's a sideline, there's a property line in the, between the lots, correct?
I beg your pardon.
There's a property line between the lots that almost bisects the park?
Yeah, I believe there was also an amendment that took place in the zoning bylaws. I think it was in May of 2014. Originally, there was a, there was a provision for any, or any items that were less than 30 inches in height were excluded. That was removed after the, the permit was issued, I think, around 2015, thereabouts.
But in terms of that other lot line, how would, would you treat that as a line that would need a setback?
As it stands now, yes.
You talked about the line in between the, between their two lots?
Oh, between the, no, no.
You would not?
Not between the two lots, if they're owned by the same entity.
Okay, even based on what the bylaw says in terms of the boundary, property boundary?
Well, those lots are obviously put, have come together. If they're going to use the, the course to overlap from one lot to another, then I would see it as, as one lot at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I respond one thing?
Yes, please.
So I have the trial testimony from the Superior Court case when Mr. Spiro testified, and I'd just like to read a portion of it. So, Mr. Spiro was asked, "And did you reach a conclusion as to what the best manner to proceed with respect to this specific question of the structures and them being potentially in the setback?" And he, Mr. Spiro responded, "I believe I did." And then the question was asked, "And what did you conclude was the best way to proceed?" And Mr. Spiro testified, "The best way to proceed was to, you know, consider them, you know, not structures and being part of the elements of the project at hand." And this was during the trial testimony of the Superior Court case. So ultimately, my understanding is, Mr. Spiro concluded them not to be structures, as he testified to during the Superior Court trial.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Town Council, or for Brendan, or for the applicant?
No.
All right. Would anyone from the public like to speak to this continuing discussion? And please, let's try and be brief.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Bouchard, if you recall from the last series of 24 Pine Street. I just wanted to speak a little bit specifically to the assessment, the IMPACT analysis, and I, I did submit a letter.
Yeah, excuse me, please, when you do come up to speak, just sign it so we can keep track of who's speaking and go from there.
And I just wanted to highlight a couple of the points from my letter that I don't think that, that Ms. Ross addressed, the limitation of the dataset. I was surprised by the fact that the answer was that the data was not available prior to 2014 or 2015 with respect to Pine Street. I think that's pretty unusual to do an evaluation of a trend in data, to not at least establish a significant baseline and a trend, and then evaluate the difference that occurs after the baseline or after the change. I'm definitely concerned about the fact that the conclusion was that there would have been an immediate change in market value after the increase in traffic, I think, at least in my experience in real estate, which is relatively limited, but it would take some time for that change to be, to affect the market, particularly on a street like Pine Street where there's, you know, at least 50% of these properties were purchased by out-of-state residents, including ours, which was purchased in 2015, which is one of the properties that was used in the evaluation. I was interested that there was an inclusion of a, a property in the dataset that was substantially smaller than the other properties, which appears to have skewed the, the average value in the year 2016, I think it was. And I also thought that the, the market duration analysis wasn't really adequately addressed, because there were certainly properties that I'm aware of on the street that were, that were not sold during the time period or, or stood, stood on the market for 18 months. Granted, while we were searching for a property from January to June of 2015 and found our property, we lost out on bids on multiple other properties of similar, you know, similar properties in Sandwich, which was the focus of the area that we were looking. And I also really disagree with the comparative analysis to other outdoor recreation facilities, because the, the factor that's completely missing, and I think Ms. Ross sort of touched on it, is there's an advantage of being in close proximity to a school or playing fields or other recreational features like that, which is missing from an adventure park like this situation, because, you know, the neighborhood isn't going to be the primary users, potentially, you know, attend the adventure park once or twice a year, maybe if you have family or friends visiting. And in reality, the issue that everybody has has to do with the access to the park. Nothing else about the park, I think that was well represented during the last hearing. Everybody thinks it's a wonderful place, a great addition to Sandwich, and we really hope that you consider the impact to the residents and our quality of life, which I think Heritage and their team really hasn't considered that. They've just repackaged their permit application to try to meet new criteria and try to fit it, you know, what, a square peg into a round hole into our community. So I hope you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have my gavel. Only kidding.
We banned him.
Thank you, Mr. Chair of the Board. So I, I just want to say, I think we're veering a little bit of field with this analysis. I respect the board's decision to consider the appraisal analysis, and I, it's helpful, you know, theoretically, but-
Why would you feel that we're leading astray? It's nuisance hazard congestion.
Right, but the point is that, the fact is that they're not eligible for a special permit under Section 4151, and that ineligibility renders, you know, totally, you know, obsolete the whole issue and obviates the need to conduct any analysis with respect to the appraisal. I'm going to get to the appraisal in a second, but I want to just start out by emphasizing that the conclusion of the building commissioner here with respect to the definition of the word "structure" can't be overstated. And it's irrefutable for a lot of the reasons that I set forth in my, in my May 8th letter, and I encourage the board to review that letter carefully and also the chart that I prepared with respect to the issues that the board has to decide in rendering a decision on the application. I won't belabor those, obviously, today, but I do want to respond to a couple of points made in Heritage's or the applicant's latest submission from last Friday. First of all, as I mentioned, or as I, as is reflected in the materials that I submitted to the board by email this afternoon, it's, it totally contradicts what they expressly acknowledged in their submission to Mr. Spiro in connection with the, the last permit application or, you know, the last instance in which the town had occasion to consider this issue. Ms. Cox- Ms. Cox expressly acknowledged that the tree platforms meet the definition of structures in the bylaw, and the reference or the quote that Commissioner Brides read from Mr. Spiro's letter a few minutes ago mentioned this fact. He mentioned that they agreed that these tree platforms were structures. That's what he was referring to, that admission in the letter. They also acknowledged it in connection with the email correspondence that I attached to my May 8th letter. Now, out of expedience, they advanced the two theories, both of which are totally invalid on their face, and I'll explain why. And by the way, I want to mention also, because I think it bears emphasis, I hadn't recalled this until I looked back at Mr. Spiro's correspondence from June 23rd of 2014. He actually found that these tree platforms were buildings independently, so they were structures and buildings. The reason that's significant is that if you look in the zoning bylaw and look at the definition of the word "structure," it includes buildings as a freestanding structure, basically. So that irrespective of whether something is attached to something on the ground, if it's a building, that for that reason, independently, it constitutes a structure. So, it constitutes a structure because it's a building for the reasons that Mr. Spiro explained, and it's a structure under the other terms of the definition of structure.
So, just so I understand you, you're defining these platforms as buildings?
And Mr. Spiro concluded that, actually, in the June 23rd, 2014 correspondence that Commissioner Brides just read from. Now, the applicant advances these two novel theories. First, they say that it's not a structure because it's an element, and those terms are mutually exclusive. As I mentioned at the last hearing and in my correspondence, those terms are not mutually exclusive. In fact, remarkably, as support for that proposition, they quote from the definition of "element" in 520 CMR 5. And if you actually read the definition, to the contrary, it actually expressly says that an element may be part of a self-supporting structure. That's a verbatim quote. I mean, that, on its face, expressly contradicts Heritage's position with respect to that issue. And remarkably, they cite the definition that expressly contradicts their position. They also advanced this theory concocted entirely from whole cloth, in brand-new fashion just for this hearing, that the word "attached" means inherently something that's nailed in. It has to be nailed to, or screwed into, or bolted to, an object to be attached to it. Now, obviously, that's, you know, that runs counter to the plain terms of the definition. It's brand-new, it's inconsistent with their previous position on this issue. And you can imagine the ready loophole that creates for builders and homeowners to easily exploit in, you know, asserting that they can circumvent the need for permitting by virtue of the fact that they've affixed something or attached something through some, you know, intermediary object that's not technically nailed to or bolted into something. But setting all that aside, it just runs counter to the plain terms of the definition of the word "attached." And if you look at the dictionary, the dictionary defines "attached" to mean, among other things, fasten, tie up, strap, adhere, bond, clamp, affix. Now, "affix" is the word that Heritage itself, or the applicant itself, used in connection with the board's last review of this project in its October 23rd, 2014 submission, where it said that visitors make their way from element to element, stopping between elements on platforms affixed to mature trees. So, they're using, you know, words that expressly contradict their position. Now, and I would submit it's just plain common sense. And again, the board would open itself up to a lot of, a lot of problems and issues down the line from people who want to exploit this newly expanded concept, or this constriction of the definition of the word "attached" to their benefit. Now, with, so, I'll leave that alone, and I'll encourage the board, again, to read carefully through the submissions on this issue. And by the way, I also want to mention, what I would encourage the board to do as an exercise is compare the arguments that Heritage made in its most recent submission, and the arguments that we advanced in our May submission. I think you'll find that the vast majority of our arguments are totally unrebutted by Heritage's correspondence. Now, with respect to the appraisal, obviously, this wasn't proffered before the court. It wasn't, you know, the court's findings, which, again, I believe are binding on the board, contradict it.
I would disagree with you there.
Well, again, and if, respectfully, if, even if you might make a hyper-technical legal argument that this isn't race, judicat, or collateral estoppel, again, a court, as a practical matter, would look at the fact that this issue was thoroughly vetted before the court, it was decided by the court, and, you know, the concept that someone could come along without the opportunity to cross-examine, or be cross-examined, and offer, you know, largely anecdotal evidence to contradict something that a court concluded in a decision that is fully adjudicated, I think as a practical matter, you know, the board would have a hard time defending a position like that in an appeal. But so, but even setting that aside, if you look at the merits, okay, and if you drill down to this analysis, it really, on its face, suffers from two fundamental defects, which, in my view, warrant totally disregarding. And that is, first of all, you don't, what you need to show, this analysis says basically, the, look, property values haven't decreased since the park opened. That's not a relevant question, that's not the issue. What you have to look at is what the property values in the neighborhood are with the park and without the park. That's something that our appraiser and our expert analyst on this issue thoroughly vetted with the court. And the court found that the introduction of this park into this neighborhood resulted in a diminution of values in the neighborhood with respect to the plan's properties below the value that they would have been without the park. That's the relevant question, and that's something that's wholly unaddressed in the submission. Now, I understand that the appraiser, the applicant's appraiser submitted some information tonight, which didn't accompany their previous submission, which I haven't had the benefit of reviewing, but based on her description of it, it sounds like, basically, what she did is she compared how values have changed since the park opened without any analysis of how property values have changed with respect to properties that are comparable to the properties in the neighborhood, or to high-view condominiums. That's an essential component, something just totally disregarded. Okay, I understand that you want me to...
Please move on.
Just briefly, the study that you're referring to, when was that completed?
The study...
The one that was, that you used, or was used in court? When was that study completed?
We've never seen that study, so...
And I'm happy to provide it.
When was it completed?
It was completed in connection with the lawsuit.
When, when was it completed?
When was the analysis completed? I don't know, the analysis was completed in connection with the case, and...
When, date, please, year?
I mean, we retained the expert in, years ago. I mean, I'm not sure, so, 2015, 26, I don't remember the exact date, and obviously, the trial was conducted in 2017.
It was completed prior to the park even opening in 17?
The park opened in 2015. No, the park opened in...
How long was the park in running when that study?
The park opened in 2015. Now, obviously, the appraiser looked at data from times preceding the park's opening, if that's your question.
Right.
Yeah.
Until, until when? So, he, how much data did he...
It was pretty close until the time of trial. I mean, I think we tried it in December, in October through December of 2017, and I think we supplemented our disclosures, if I recall correctly, sometime in late September or early October.
The study was probably completed sometime in the middle of 17, maybe the fall of 17, so it was prepared.
Well, she was, she was reviewing data in connection with the case for, you know, I would say, the entirety of her engagement. But with respect to the testimony that was presented, or the materials that were presented in court, I think that they were updated as of, I don't know, let's say mid-September to late, or to early October, perhaps, of 2017. So, but the other defect with respect to the applicant's appraisal information is that, so, in addition to not considering comps, and not considering the condition with and without the project, they, she does this paired sales analysis, which is totally flawed insofar as it measures properties, first of all, that are geographically distant from and not in any way connected with the project, including properties outside of Sandwich. But they're also, what's compared is the values of properties near ballfields and school-related athletic facilities, and properties that are exclusively residential, or in exclusively residential neighborhoods without those things. The reason that that's not relevant at all is that, as I mentioned at my last, at the last session of the hearing, people actually are attracted to communities based on proximity to things like, you know, school-related ballfields and the like. They want to, that makes the community attractive to them, the quality of their schools and the school-related athletic...
I had a question, and she gave an answer that some people heard, some don't, so it was, it was, I think, an analysis that was important to look at. She was trying to give us an example of how certain things are affected by other factors, so I think it had some relevance. I certainly learned something from reading it, so I don't think it bears any criticism.
Look, what I'm saying is, it's not, it's not relevant to the question or to the impact of the project on the neighborhood properties. I don't think it's sufficiently connected. Now, with respect to the visitor counts, I just, one more point, if I may. And I had more, but I'll cap it at this. The visitor counts, first of all, I heard Mr. Azarm suggest that on a busy day, you'll get 250 visitors. We have actually daily visitor counts that were introduced as trial exhibits, which reflect that, actually, on a typical busy day in the summertime, the visitor counts are almost double that. I mean, there are several days for which it was, I don't know if what they submitted to you, because I haven't seen that, does it include daily totals?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so you'll see. There are several days for which they had 350-plus, 400 visitors. And I also want, I think this point is important to emphasize, because it could get lost. You can't, in considering the visitor totals, you can't just look at what they've been historically, because those are artificially low. And the reason is that throughout the course of the litigation, and read the submission from May 8th, it details this, throughout the litigation, they were employing means to artificially reduce their visitor totals for the benefit of the litigation. They were contemplating all sorts of means to improve visitor counts, as you would imagine, as any business would. Not...
How do they do that exactly?
What's that?
How do they discourage people from coming?
No, no, what I'm saying is, there were all sorts of strategies that they intended to employ post-litigation to drive up visitor counts. And you can rest assured that they'll do that. And when I say that, I'm not suggesting that they intend to expand the courses. They've said very clearly, "We'd need further permitting for that." Now, look, as a practical matter, you know, don't kid a kitter, I mean, this is a camel's nose under the tent type of thing. I'm sure that if permitted, it wouldn't surprise me if we were back here years from now, you know, seeking to add courses. But I want to say, putting that aside, okay, there are all sorts of means through which you can drive up these visitor totals without doing anything that would require permitting, including harnesses, no, increasing harnesses...
I think they've proved their point, that these are fairly factual enough for our purposes at this time.
Right, if I may say, one more, one more line. What I'm saying is, that they had contemplated, and these are in trial exhibits, I'm happy to provide them to the board, adding harnesses and adding basically intake stations, basically in reducing the time of the ticket, to increase the number of visitors to the park without doing anything that would require additional permitting.
But they're telling us they haven't done that, they don't intend to.
No, what they said is, they don't intend to expand the park physically.
Correct.
But these measures wouldn't require any physical expansion of the park, even if you want to take them at face value and believe them, that they don't intend in the future to expand the park physically. I'm not going to comment on that, other than say, look at the excerpts that I quoted from the trial exhibits, and, I mean, there's an abundance of information to reflect that they were, they intended all these measures and were avoiding them solely for expansion with the litigation, but...
Okay, thank you very much.
Am I, am I being cut off now?
You're excused. You can come back at the end.
Okay, thank you.
All right, like I said, if anybody else would like to speak, please just keep it, keep it to something that we haven't heard from you before, and try to keep it concise, and put your name on the list, please.
Aye, aye.
Thank you.
It's not on, right?
It is.
It is. It's really on. Can you hear me right now? Can you hear me that well now?
Could you...
Are you sure this is on?
Could you say your name?
Very well hear.
Yeah, you can. All right. I just asked, because I'm sitting right here, and I'm having a great deal of difficulty hearing anyone that's sitting here, other than myself, speak, okay? So, maybe a way to turn it on, because if we can, we get a lot more volume. Thank you for the opportunity. Members of the board, my name is Dick Harries, I'm at Ken Morgan Trail. I did speak earlier. I had some comments regarding statements made at the previous meeting, and I can't write fast enough. I'm trying to keep these here. Could I make just a comment as one that's sitting and listening?
Sure you can.
I get the feeling here that this board does not have a very high regard for Judge Moriarty and the Superior Court ruling.
This, we're not talking about Judge Moriarty, but this is a new application from the board with all-new information.
What is all-new information?
This complete presentation by the applicant, under a different some by law?
I'm going to quote some of the things she's talking about, and you're going to find I'm not going to repeat anything that I repeated last time.
Okay.
But I will mention the ruling, because the ruling is very critical to this particular group. You've been here before, I don't want you here again. I have a few comments I'd like to make. Unfortunately for the town, this new proposal from Heritage, again, pits neighbor against neighbor, and that is too bad. And almost all the comments in favor, which were last week, but I think these comments have been made, were that this is really a great opportunity, it's a great fun event. There is no argument from the protagonists or from the people who are opposed to this. It is a neat device. Lots of people have a lot of fun on it. But unfortunately, it's not compatible on a number of grounds with the character of the neighborhood. Yet I hear someone telling me that what you're proposing, by the way, did anyone notice that that poor young lady who went first didn't know what we were calling this thing for all these years? However, she never used anything other than a ropes course describing what took place in the past. I don't know. But under the law, it's in question here, not whether it's popular or not, whether it is okay. In interpreting the proper application of the bylaw, the judge did state that the construction of a zoning enactment is ultimately a judicial function, and therefore subject to judicial review and rulings. You would understand that better than most. Surely, you must also understand the judge's ruling presents a major judicial block to any permitting activity that you would consider that fails to remove his ruling. I hope you had a chance to read his rulings, because he mentioned many things in that ruling, okay? We believe in the end that the Sandwich bylaw will remain the bulwark for all its citizens against a lot of noise that's being made about unlawful uses and activities. Now, I sense some confusion, and I would like to just spend a couple of minutes on it. Last time, when the order for judgment, with the hope of clarifying it, under the rulings of law, the judge focused on three areas: building permit, Dover Amendment, and the protection of property values under the bylaw. All three were dealt with in his order for judgment. The building permit was covered, the town felt it was protected, under the Dover Amendment, which waived applicability of state zoning law and Sandwich bylaw, and allowed a commercial enterprise in an island district. The Zoning Board of Appeals upheld the granting of that permit because of the Dover Amendment. Upon legal review in a civil suit, the judge ruled the Dover Amendment did not apply. That said, without the Dover Amendment, all applicable bylaw protections now apply, and the judge ruled the decision was made on legally untenable grounds.
Excuse me, sir. Sir, we understand that, we've read the ruling, and we thought it was the Dover Amendment applied, we thought the Dover Amendment applied, the judge didn't. So be it, we move on.
Sorry, what?
I said, we thought the Dover Amendment applied... I said, we thought the Dover Amendment applied, the judge disagreed. So be it, we move on. This, that, that is not before us now. So we're, we're talking about a special permit we're asking for.
I would just say, and I'll, and I'll cut this short, because if you say that you can overrule the Superior Court judge, you tell me.
No, we didn't say that. No, 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 no. No, we didn't, we didn't, we did not say that. The, the, the permit came before us as to, is it, is it the Dover Amendment or not? We thought it applied. We did not disagree with the judge or overturn the judge. The judge overturned us. That's it, simple, case closed.
Okay.
Let's move on.
Let's go, uh, here I go. Two weeks ago, here at a previous open ZBA meeting, I again heard a lot of lawyers speak. One of the comments made stated, "This board is not bound in its valuation of special permit under the zoning bylaw by the Superior Court determination," et cetera. Although this statement was in reference to standing, it sums up Heritage's attitude and the contempt for the Superior Court's judgment. It applies. As you weigh what you read in here, I want to remind you of the roles being played out before you. Lawyers and applicants are speaking. They allege, "A judge has spoken, he adjudges." Don't look for answers in post-trial allegations and testimonies. That ship has sailed. But it left some reminders of just how much the neighbors' trust in Heritage Museum and Gardens has eroded over the past few years. Here are just two.
All right, let's just, please, move it along.
I'm coming. Four years ago, the applicant here, in this room, alleged before you that they were protected under Dover Amendment, because the AAP was primarily educational. The judge adjudged that was untrue, and therefore Dover protection did not apply. Secondly, for the last four years, the applicant has alleged and certified on multiple town documents that the AAP was located on Lot 6. The judge adjudged that, too, was untrue. When is enough going to be enough, as some truth found out? Approval of the application before the Zoning Board of Appeals will be a wrongful attempt to overrule the findings of the court, which is unlawful use. That's unlawful use against our bylaw.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Additionally, such decisions encounter.
Please, please, excuse me. Let's move on.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, I, I think I think you.
No, I think we understand where you're coming from.
All right, I, I do, but we need to spend more time reading what someone of authority has said.
Thank you.
He spent hours going over.
Thank you. Would you think, you don't spend hours doing our work? Thank you. All right, Carl.
Almost fell over backwards. You sure you don't have that gavel in?
No.
All right. Okay, this is all going to be long, and will be relatively brief.
Thank you.
On the application, uh, Heritage, uh, applied for operating a course as a small-scale outdoor recreational, uh, facility pursuant to Section 4150. The first thing Heritage is attempting to do, to change, and I don't know why, is to extract the word "community." In the bylaw, it says, here's what the bylaw says, "Small-scale community recreational sports field and facilities." Now, they may have great stuff they're showing you tonight, and they may have shown you what you think is great stuff previous to this. But we have to remember two things, especially one thing. And this is, uh, the most important question. What is this zoning board's definition of small-scale community, as those words are used in the bylaw for 4150? It's essential tonight that small-scale and community be defined. If this zoning board of appeals cannot give us a definition of small scale and community, how is this zoning board going to vote? Zoning, the zoning board cannot vote on what they can't define. In other words, you have to be able to say to these people, "Okay, this is what we're going to establish a small scale, and this will go henceforth, and we're going to let you guys talk about small scale." Because we don't think small-scale community is something where you have 30,000 people a year coming up your street. We think it's a baseball field that's used every so often. It's a, uh, a, uh, basketball court like down by the wing school that's used every so often. It might even be a little association thing like down at the end of Kai's Way that's used every so often, certainly not 30,000 people a year. 30,000 people a year is big business. Buy a company that owns nine such adventure parks. Big business. That's what we're talking about. We're not talking about small-scale community. So, before you vote, you should be able to turn and look at all these people and say, "This is what small-scale community is, and this is what we're voting on." You have that duty?
If we do that, that'll be part of our deliberations.
Loud and clear. But it should be before we're all through speaking, because somebody might have a comment. You know what I mean?
We will keep the hearing open, don't you worry.
So you, you'll come up with the definition, keep the hearing open. God bless you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, anyone else would like to speak? Pro or con, please, come on up.
Good evening.
My name, my name is Eric Small. My comments are in part attributed to Kaz Malek. Kaz and I both live on Jonathan Lane. Quote from Kaz, who wouldn't be here, says, "The ropes course at Heritage is in the wrong place." In fairness, gentlemen, please ask yourselves, if Heritage did not exist with majority owner of this commercial enterprise, be permitted to install and operate at this location. If your true answer is no, then you are in agreement with the ruling of the Superior Court, that it's an unlawful use, and with respect, it must be permanently closed. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
My name is Dean Coe. I live three doors from Heritage. I don't want to be in this chair. I've moved here in 1983 and have been a neighbor since that time. My comments are looking back. My apologies, Ann. I'm not looking forward. I just met Ann tonight for the first time. I know Heather well, who has been the acting director. My, um, business, I have been a consultant to nonprofit organizations, including Heritage, in the past. This project started out of the gate with deception. It continued deceptively. In spite of the fact that the deception was pointed out early on, right in the beginning, it continued. It took the court to exercise the discipline that the board should have exercised. What should have happened was, there should have been a time when the board said, "Time out, we made a mistake. We want this to go forward, and we're going to start again." But that didn't happen. It took the court to exercise the discipline. I've been on many boards of nonprofits, and as I said, I've consulted with them. I understand sustainability. I understand that a nonprofit organization has to revitalize itself. It has to be constantly changing to keep itself going and to be sustainable. The PBD Essex Museum, the oldest marine museum in the United States, was, was fighting the same sustainability issues. They went and bought a 2,000-square-foot Chinese house, out of China, took it apart, brought it to PBD Essex, and installed it right in the middle of their museum. And it has brought untold numbers to the organization. There's probably plenty, plenty people in this room that have stood there like I have in awe of, of the, the experience that I was having that I couldn't have had. That was an organization that made a decision based upon their values, based upon their mission, and based upon the history and those who'd gone before it. And it was consistent with their values, and it, and it increased the value of the surrounding community. Closer to home, Cape Cod Museum and Natural History.
Mr. Coe, can you kind of address what's in front of us instead of these other projects? Because they're not relevant.
I am. I am. Cape Cod Museum and Natural History needed to address sustainability. They didn't put in a zip line. They put in a butterfly house, consistent with the values that they were preaching and had been preaching. I have a concern that doesn't deal with Heritage, and that is, that if this gets passed, what are we saying to future organizations, both within the org, both within our community and outside of our community, that want to move selfishly towards their own interest? What are we saying to them? We're setting a precedent. That scares me. You folks, the Historic Commission and others, and we have our fun poking at some of the decisions that are made by both organizations, have a responsibility, and it has been well-handled in the past. We only need to look at 6A versus Route 28A, or 28, to see the differences between our communities. This is a community of value. You have contributed to that by the decisions you've made in the past. The wrong decision here is not going to be an answer. If to vote in favor of this is only going to compound this problem. It's time to move on. Heritage has new leadership. Heritage has lost a lot of members based upon the behavior of past performance. It's time to heal, and it's time to move on. And the one way to do that is to let this go and go after sustainability in a way that is far more conducive to the history of the organization and the values.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Coe. Anyone else like to speak? Anybody out back in the foyer like to speak? Anybody out back there want to speak? Okay, we're good. Oh, yes, please.
I'd like to speak. I'd like to respond to those comments.
You go right ahead.
I'm the leader of Heritage. We have leadership. We're looking at her. You're sitting next to board members on our Board of Trustees. You're looking at our leadership. Thank you. Now, a couple, just a couple of things I'd like to say, because I'm sorry, I don't think, Mr. Coe, that you were at the last hearing. Were you?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I'm glad that you were, but I would just like to say that we did address values at that meeting. And, um, I don't necessarily think that these comments were particularly pertinent to this case, but I just simply would like to respond that the adventure park is an extension of our values. The values of families working together, the values of education, an outreach and force for education, and the value of discovery in nature. You've heard this before, I don't need to say it again, but I simply would like to write the ship back to upright, um, with respect to this as being an extension of our values. Um, I also, oh, shoot, I just lost my thought. Um, I'd simply wanted to say that I do believe, um, the question about community, that I did speak before about community benefit, and, um, I would simply like to underscore the fact that there's a lot of community benefit from the adventure park that's very positive, and it has to do with, um, schools and other groups that use it, um, as well as the neighbors who use it. So, um, I'm going to leave it at that, but I would simply like to try to write things back, um, to where they were, and, um, and underscore that this project is an extension of our mission. It's an extension of our values, and it's not, um, that's not exactly the question on the table anyway.
Right.
Um, but I would simply like to say that we know who we are, we know what our mission is, we know what our values are, and we respect that you're keeping the conversation on the, on the guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, before we hear from Mr. Mello again, would anybody like to speak?
Mr. Chairman, could I respond to a few of the comments?
Sure, go ahead.
First, I, I want to be very clear, that there is no contempt here for the Superior Court decision. Immediately when the Superior Court decision issued, Heritage and the adventure park closed, fully consistent with the Superior Court decision. In addition, this whole application is consistent with the Superior Court decision. As I mentioned previously, in finding that this was not dominantly educational, the court found that it was dominantly recreational. And here we are, seeking a recreation special permit, outdoor recreation special permit. In addition, there were comments made regarding that the Superior Court, uh, determined, uh, that there was a, a loss in property value. That was for four properties, four properties, the plaintiff's properties. What we have presented to you through Mrs. Ross's analysis is how this project impacts the neighborhood. And as her report indicates, there is no negative, uh, market impact with, to the neighborhood as a whole, as a result of this project. Finally, as it relates to Mr. DePercio's comments about, um, what the criteria is, that's the board's, that's in your discretion. You have to, uh, review the terms and apply them to the application that's before you. And I would suggest, in terms of whether it's small scale, you just, you look at the criteria of the zoning bylaw, and again, the criteria of 4151 directly relates to the scale, and ensures that anything that comes under that application, and it has to meet each criteria- that comes under that application, and it has to meet each criteria, that ensures that it is small scale. And as Ann mentioned, the record that we've submitted is replete with community benefit, how this project creates local jobs, access to schools, a venue for emergency responders. And you've heard tremendous positive comment from the community in support of this application. And then finally, getting back to the question of whether the platforms are structures. Again, I would reiterate that Mr. Spear's testimony from October of 2017 determined that they were not structures but elements. It is our position, the platforms are not attached to something on the ground. The platforms are -- they're not structures because they're not affixed to the ground, they're not located on the ground, they're not in a fixed location on the ground, and they're not attached to anything constructed on the ground. They are not structures under your zoning bylaw, consistent with what the building commissioner previously found. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Mello.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry. Should I sign in again?
No, you've been quite eloquent. I think you've covered all your bases, so please just try to cover what you haven't covered and be as succinct as possible.
Absolutely. I don't want to -- trust me, I don't want to waste anyone's time, and I appreciate it. If I could, just address one of the last comments that Attorney Cox made. This is something that I meant to say, and I need to first go around this evening. Let me be clear, and it's reflected in my May submission, but Mr. Spear, I understand testimony from the trial's been quoted, or an excerpt from testimony's been quoted, but he explained the basis for that reversal in email communications, internal email communications with members or town officials that were introduced as evidence at trial. And I'm happy to get copies if the board wishes, but he said, and I think this summarizes concisely why he reversed his position, that he hoped to give Ms. Spear, the predecessor, CEO of Heritage, the impression that we are helping her along with the project by not denying and having her go before the ZBA requesting an appeal of my zoning opinion, which I believe would not get overturned. I mean, it couldn't be clearer why he reversed his position. But that doesn't derogate from the fact that, in his heart of hearts, he had actually, professionally, arrived at the same conclusion that Commissioner Brides correctly arrives at in finding that these are structures and buildings, these tree platforms. I also wanted to just respond to one point that the applicant advanced in its May 24th letter to the effect that this is unequivocally a challenge course. Again, I just want to emphasize, because I don't want this to get lost in the thicket of details that the board has been inundated with here. Regardless of what people considered it pre-Superior Court judgment, following the court's judgment, this cannot be considered a challenge course, even if people thought it was before and if it was licensed as such before. Because there is no, and this can't be disputed in view of the court's ruling, there is no supervised curriculum associated with this activity. It's a totally self-guided activity. There's no supervised curriculum. That requirement is expressly contained within the definition of challenge course in the state regulations.
Give me a second, Mr. Mello. Didn't they tell us that there was a half-hour class on instructions before you could go on the course? You can't just walk up, pay a ticket, and jump on the course and go. You have to go through a 30-minute...
I think it's actually, I think the testimony of the trial was to the effect that it's 15 minutes, but that, and let me just clarify that that, and we can produce testimony and trial exhibits that support this concept as well. That was exclusively to show people how to strap themselves into their harnesses, basically. It's not, that can't be plausibly characterized as any bona fide curriculum or supervised curriculum as the state regulations intend. Look, there's plenty of, and there's plenty of literature from the aerial adventure park industry itself that I accompanied, or that I attached to my May 8th letter that reflects that the aerial adventure park industry itself, ASTM standards reflect this, and the white paper that I attached to my May submission reflects this that they regarded.
Can the applicant respond to your point?
No, but they haven't, and that was contained to my...
She'd like to respond to what you're saying at the moment, so let's listen.
The court never evaluated whether there was a recreational curriculum associated with this project. That's absurd. All the court found was that this was not a dominantly educational use. Of course, there's a recreational curriculum. You get up, you have elements to navigate and to pass through. By its very structure, there's a recreational curriculum associated with this use. And that was never before the court.
No, and let me respond to that. The actual definition refers to a supervised curriculum, and the court emphasized that this is a totally self-guided activity. And basically, that proposition would strip curriculum of any meaning, would render basically anything sufficient to constitute curriculum, which is not the case. I think, you know, it's self-evident that that's untrue, but...
Respectfully, Mr. Chairman, the court never ruled whether the challenge course under the state regulations...
So if I can proceed without being interrupted, and I wasn't given the opportunity to interrupt Attorney Cox during her presentation.
No, I just thought while you were here talking, that it'd be best if you -- I'd pull that. Okay, move on, Mr. Mello.
Thank you. With respect to the appraisal analysis, now, again, putting aside any hyper-technical legal arguments that you want to...
Didn't we, I mean...
But no, but one question that arose, which I want to respond to, I don't feel like having fully vetted this with the court and establishing a diminution of value, like we should really have to present a whole lot of information to the board to establish that proposition. But if the board is inclined to, you know, rule adversely with respect to the opposition on that issue, I would request an opportunity to provide the board with trial exhibits and testimony that served as the basis for the court's correct conclusion that this project resulted in a diminution of value among properties in the neighborhood.
Was there a written report, similar to the report that Ms. Ross presented to us from those days that we could review?
Absolutely. Well, I can't recall if there was a narrative that was submitted as part of the trial record.
In front of us, we have a report from a very legitimate organization stating that there were property improvement, real estate value improvements. Do you have something similar to that?
We have exhibits that basically summarize the results of our expert appraisers' analysis of the property values with and without the park, based on comps. So, and those are trial exhibits, and I believe there may have been a narrative, there's certainly plenty of testimony in which she fully substantiates her findings, again, to the court's approval. I'm happy to provide the board with all that information. It's been adjudicated. I would, I'd be surprised if the board reasonably, you know, could conclude that there were any, you know, would disagree with the court's conclusions in this regard. That would surprise me, but I'm happy to provide all that. And she actually, the trial exhibits that we offered to this, to support these conclusions were, I would say, more detailed than the analysis that's been proffered by the applicant.
This is the only one we have.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. If the board, I guess I perhaps incorrectly suspected that the board wouldn't put upon us the obligation of having to relitigate something that we fully vetted with the court and that the court decided in our favor, but if the board, if the board's notwithstanding that, wants to see our appraisal analysis, I would request an opportunity to present that to the board.
Was that analysis done exclusively for the four plaintiffs' houses, or was there any neighborhood analysis that accompanied it?
Yeah, good question. I think, if I recall, and I don't remember all the particulars of it, but sort of as of necessity, in order to substantiate her conclusions with respect to the four properties at issue in the litigation, she had to analyze comps inside and outside of the neighborhood. Like, for example, at Hilltop, there were some properties at Hilltop that were analyzed in connection with her testimony, and comps outside the neighborhood, which is critical. And again, that's something that's totally omitted from the appraisal analysis that was submitted to the board in connection with the application tonight and previously. So, yeah, we have, there was, it wasn't, our exhibits weren't confined to those summaries that I explained, where she went through. It read almost like a spreadsheet, as I recall. It was, it basically enumerated in excellent detail, I think, the bases, what she was actually looking at when she was comparing these properties.
Bob, is that something that you feel we need to...
Well, I mean, the applicant has come in front of us to meet the litmus test of 4151. And one of that, actually, it's not under 4151.
No, it's not.
I know that. But the contention was that this special permit would be detrimental to the neighborhood, and it would have adverse effects on the property values. The applicant has given us documentation that it will not or has not made any change in that. And if they, if someone in the public has something that differs with that, I don't have a problem looking at it. But it's not like we're on trial here where, you know, we've got two sides against another. This is an application. They've given us the information. If you want to give us something, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. And just to clarify one point, the analysis doesn't actually show, what it shows is that purportedly, since the project was introduced, property values have increased in the neighborhood. But that's not the relevant question, again.
Yes, it is.
No, it isn't. The question is, how is the value different with the project from what it would be without the project? That analysis can be conducted. That was what was reviewed, absolutely. If you...
The alleged property values have declined as a result of this.
No, but let me be clear. If property values, let's say, for example, theoretically, there's some major economic boom that results in a dramatic increase in real estate values nationwide, okay? You introduce a project into a neighborhood, it's not going to stem the increase in values, but it's going to, it's going to limit the increase below what it would be otherwise. And that is a diminution in value. If my property, and by the way, the diminution here is tens of thousands of dollars with respect to the plaintiff's property. These aren't insignificant decreases. If my property, let's just...
What was the conclusion of the submitted report, that it really didn't have any difference? That it was very similar to air property in the rest of the area?
No, that's the thing. That's the fundamental flaw. And I'm glad you raised this. That's the problem with this analysis. It does not do that. It looks at it in a vacuum. It doesn't compare it with how comps townwide have fared since the project was introduced or other means through which you can ascertain or arrive at these conclusions. It just looks at it in a vacuum and says, "Well, since the project was introduced, property values have risen." You know, that's illogical on its face, because if you think about it, all you have to do is adjust the relevant, you know, duration of the period you're looking at. And like, for example, if the project were introduced in 2000, let's say, okay? No one disputes that since 2000, property values have increased. But if the property would be valued at twice as much without the project as it would be today with the project, then how can you say that it hasn't resulted in a diminution of value? Of course it has. The property's half the value that it would have been without the project, notwithstanding the fact that since it was introduced, yeah, predictably, real estate values have changed. I talked to a guy who told me you could buy something in Back Bay in 1960 for $4,000, you know? So I think that's self-evident.
So your point is that the diminution of values, it's still positive, but it's not as positive as...
And I don't know that it's so...
And I don't believe that, because that's not what the report showed.
That's right.
The report showed that the general condo population valuation for the town sandwich, I believe, was six...
It was comparable.
It was comparable.
Thirty-five percent increase in that five-year period.
Thirty-five versus twenty...
Is that in the information that was submitted to the board tonight?
It was in the report from Ms. Ross.
But not, I don't believe that the measurement was of condos townwide, but even if it was...
It's right there.
Even if it was, you have to look at comps. You can't just look at it in a vacuum like that, because there could be condos townwide that are, that are not appropriate comps.
Okay. We get your point.
All right, let's move on.
Am I right?
Mr. Mello, okay. We understand your valuation issue, and really would like to get this wrapped up.
Okay, okay. And I'm happy to submit our appraisal analysis to the board.
Fine.
And I just want to, one more point, something that Mr. De Persio, a comment that he mentioned that I think bears emphasis, and that is that this definition of small-scale community activity, that, you know, I don't think you need to actually draw any conclusion with respect to what that means, because they're ineligible on other grounds before you even get there. But if you do get to that question, the board can't really decide that, or it wouldn't be appropriate, in my opinion, to decide that question without availing itself of the means through which we can actually ascertain what town meeting intended when it adopted that language. You can look at town meeting...
As you know, the planning board requests the definitions, they write the definitions, they either get approved at town meeting or they don't, and then we just have to define the way we feel they read. So we can't make a definition of small scale, then put it in the manual.
No, but what I'm saying is, you can look at, for example, materials, backup materials associated with that town meeting article.
Correct, but there's a definition in there of what fits a small scale, and that's what we have to go by at this point in time.
Well, no, that...
It's not arguable.
No, it is arguable, actually. And, no, the zoning bylaw provision, and I know Attorney Cox has proffered this theory, it's actually incorrect that the zoning bylaw defines small scale by those elements under 4151.
We look at a definition that is in the manual provided to us, approved by town meeting, and we interpret it as best we can based on the special permit that's presented to us. Case closed.
Fair enough. I'm just saying that you can actually look at what the draft is intended, the language to mean, by looking at the town meeting warrant article, the backup materials, perhaps, you know, reviewing town meeting minutes to ascertain. For example, suppose there was a comment from a floor explaining by the proponents of the article that what we mean by small-scale community activities, and when we put that qualifying language in the definition of outdoor recreation, what we mean by that is just ball fields.
But they didn't.
No, but you don't, that's my point. We don't know that. The board, the board could avail itself of the means to ascertain that, is my point. And I would suggest that if you're going to decide that this, and you'll have to get to this question, actually, as I mentioned, but if you're going to get to this question and decide that this is a small-scale community activity, it's not appropriate for the board to do that without at least checking to see what town meeting set up that issue.
I believe that's been done, and we are looking, but typical towns, there's not a whole lot there.
Okay.
So we'll do diligence. That's the one thing we always do. So we're fine.
Fair enough.
All right.
And finally, I just want to say one more thing.
All right. Now, finally, that's...
It's not, I want to thank the board. No, I appreciate it. I want to thank the board for allowing me to present. And I think this is known, but I just want to emphasize it, because, you know, it has not been lost on me, that you probably have only been acquainted with me over the years through the litigation, and probably just the mere sight of my name has raised the blood pressure of some of you.
Honestly, I had no idea who you were when you showed up.
No, and I don't, look, that's great. You're not alone, but my point is, to the extent that there's, you know, that there's any inherent ill will...
It's not the way we are. This board's been together for 13, 15 years. We're always fair, we always listen, we always do due diligence, and we do the best we can. Has nothing to do with who's before us.
Okay, and I respect that. I just, I wanted to make, I wanted to be explicit about that, because there's nothing personal. Obviously, boards under 4817 are required to be named as parties in any legal challenge under that provision, so...
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask you one time?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. I've been listening to all the pros and cons here, and I have a question in regards to what is, what we are going to call a structure and what we are not going to call a structure. I hear, I hear the applicant say that true is not an app, is not a structure. I hear the town zoning bylaw says it is. We have a legal town council here. What I'd like to know is, what is the legal town council's opinion on whether that's a structure or it's not a structure? Is that possible to obtain tonight?
Sure. Town council? You thought you were sitting over there quietly.
The zoning bylaw defines structure, and ultimately, it is the building inspector's job in the first instance to interpret that definition. To the extent anybody disagrees with that, they have the option of bringing that question before you as a zoning board of appeals, and you are the ultimate arbiter of what that definition means and whether it applies to this particular project and structure. If anybody disagrees with that interpretation, they have the ability to seek further judicial review of that interpretation. So I'm not sure my opinion necessarily matters here, but certainly you have a definition, and the building inspector and the board can choose to interpret that and apply it.
Thank you. And I understand your response. You knew that'd go around the circle.
I would just add to that. I would add, to the extent that the building commissioner has determined that interpretation and that determination, any reversal of that would require its own independent precedent.
We understand.
As opposed to that question being decided, or the building commissioner's determination of that question being decided, in conjunction with this application.
I disagree with that, Mr. Chairman. You have an application before you that requires you to evaluate...
You have an application before you that requires you to evaluate how the zoning bylaw applies to a particular project in, in front of you, including whether the elements of this project meet the definitions or not. So this is squarely before the board to make that determination.
I disagree with the town council. One oh four-
Excuse me, what, what, Carl, what do you disagree with? She, she was very correct in her response.
But she said you have the ultimate decision on what-
We do.
One oh four point one two, now that's not provided for in the building code, 780 CMR takes precedence.
Building code or what?
Pardon me?
What are you talking about?
I'm talking about that it's, that if, because things in the building industry change constantly, that there are matters that they can't cover. That's what they say in this paragraph, and they say the building inspector-
Is that here?
Is that the building-
I think it's a reference to the building code.
The building code, some-
Our purview-
It's right here.
Is zoning by law.
And the definitions that are in there are what we go by.
And yes, and you don't go to the building code.
No. We don't. We can't.
We don't go to Title V code. We don't go to chemicals code. We go to this code right here.
So, so people can build in this town without following the building code?
No, that's the building inspector.
That's the building department.
Oh, okay. And so he can say it's, it's a structure, and that's the final word?
No, it isn't. We're the final word. We just, you just said that.
So you can say it's not a structure? So you can say this building's not a structure?
With regards to special permits and variances-
You can say this building, you can say this building is not a structure?
We, we have to determine based on the definitions and the rules in here. We interpret them, and we act, the building inspector has to abide by our decision.
Okay, so, just, I won't belabor, I promise you. But if you have a, a platform, thirty, you are making this decision. If you've got a platform thirty feet off the ground, and you've got ten little kids on it, you're saying, you can say it's not a structure and doesn't have to be inspected?
I didn't say anything about inspections. I just said we can define it as, as one thing or another. The inspection, the safety aspect of it is up to the state.
And not for the platforms?
Yes, it is. They do the inspections.
They do the third-party inspection on cables and elements. They don't inspect the platforms.
Platforms and elements.
But they don't inspect platforms.
Well, I'm not going to argue with you, because I'm, it's not within our purview, but safety is not-
So, so if a little kid falls off the structure, which just happened down in Virginia, forty feet slipped off the platform, you're saying that's, you're, you're covered, you're all set?
There's nothing, we have no approval over that whatsoever.
So you're saying you can't say it is or isn't a platform?
We can, we have the responsibility to define it under our bylaw as a structure or not.
Are you defining these platforms that are thirty feet in the air with little kids on them? Are you saying they're platforms or not, or structures or not?
We haven't deliberated at that point yet.
Let us get to it.
Okay. I'll be listening carefully.
Brenda, did you want to say something?
Please.
As far as the platform being inspected, there is nothing in the building code specifically about these types of platforms, so in this situation where they're attached to a tree by way of a friction fit, we'd rely on the opinions of, of an engineer who would confirm that the platform or the structure would be adequate to hold people in this situation.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else would like to speak to the, the issue at hand here? All right.
Well, there's been some discussion about the public submitting the real estate analysis to contrast what Ms. Ross did. Do we leave this open to accept that material?
What I would recommend, I think we should do, is keep the hearing open, not close it. Schedule the next appointment for Tuesday, June 11th, and wrap it up at that time and deliberate.
All right. I will not be here.
Wait, we will-
But I, I can do it, yeah.
Yeah, we, that's fine.
Eric will be back.
Eric will be back.
So we'll always have five. Right.
Yeah, we always got five.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could I just comment on that? If I could confer with my clients, I may have some scheduling issue with June 11th. Could we take a two-minute recess on that?
Sure.
But before we do that, what I would just reiterate is, this matter has been open now for over a month.
Oh, I understand that.
There's been ample time to submit studies and reports. The report that we've submitted to you is more comprehensive in that it has additional time periods that were not included in the document that was reviewed by the court for the four plaintiffs' properties. We have all of 2017 in the report that Ms. Ross submitted, and we've also included 2018. It is a more comprehensive look at the neighborhood as a whole over a longer period of time.
Yeah, I think more along the lines of, there's such an extreme amount of information and data to look at, that I'm not ready to deliberate till midnight tonight. I want to make the right decision.
Right.
So I think if we come back fresh when you're available, I think that makes the most sense. I don't know how the board feels on that.
Well, do you guys want to deliberate any aspects of it tonight or not?
Well, I mean, I mean, we'd close it, and therefore-
No, we're not going to close it.
We're not going to close it. We're going to leave, we're going to deliberate and leave it open while we're deliberating.
Okay.
So we're not leaving it open just to take more information. We're leaving it open-
Right. Just to give us time to-
We can continue to deliberate on it.
Could I just take a moment to look at my schedule and see if June 11th will work?
Maybe next week? Yeah, but we can find a different venue somewhere, or a different night, does that Tuesday night?
I have to look at the schedule.
I'm pretty much, I'm pretty much booked.
Kristen, Jim, have we ever deliberated on something without physically closing the public hearing?
No, but I, I understand after discussion, Ralph and the town council, we can do so.
Can do that?
Yeah, if I may, it gives an opportunity of questions, right? Since this is a complicated issue, that you may have questions that either staff needs to address, or the applicant needs to address. There may be, you know, maybe questions in the commission, or client, but once you close it, it's only amongst yourselves.
Additional information can continue to be submitted.
As long as it's open, keep on coming in. Well, let's wait for the applicant to-
Could we just step out for one minute? Quick recess, thank you.
They were open 2015 through 2018. I don't know, did it 17, 18? Don't know. Is Ralph now? All right. Do you know how, do you know how long, do you know how long Heritage was open? How many years they were open? No, I'm sorry, the Adventure Park. Yeah, I'm just curious, because they had, they gave us information. Yeah. What, I have just, yeah, it's 2017 and 18. In 2017, they already had, or they had 18,000 people, but something along the line, they had like, um-
It was 30.
Yeah. One year was 30,000. I don't know where it went, I don't know where it's somewhere. No. And then they, October 17, I think they closed their- Huh? Yes. Was it August of 2018? Yeah, because that's right. Yeah, because it closed. Eight thirty-one was the last day they had anyone there. Biggest, biggest year.
It's funny, this Sunday, the Adventure Park was closed. It was closed.
Yeah.
Two days, Heritage closed for a long period.
Yeah, and they, they did close, and then they were going to have some flights, or whatever it's called.
Well, Heritage, Heritage probably get ready for-
Yeah. Wouldn't that be Columbus Day or? It's kind of my turn, too. I think it would be. Oh, you're also on mic, we're on mic, too. I'm sorry, I, I've been doing this. I'm sorry, I brought up the show, uh, valuation. They should have presented it to us. Just like in the case, they said that this woman gave that, and the judge agreed with it, but we didn't give anything. But we're not under court law rights. So. Yeah, yeah. So, let's go back to that. I have a word for all of the time.
I was, I was thinking about doing that.
Why? Okay. Hey, Chris? You ready?
I'll let him do it.
All right, we'll resume the meeting.
Thank you, Eliza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could, before we look at calendars, could Mr. Azrom just make one quick response to something that was made, just for the record, so that it's clear?
Sure. Of course.
Thank you. There's been a lot of discussion about platforms, and I just want to clarify a couple of things. One is that it is definitely the state that does inspect the platforms. But secondly, actually, the platforms are not something that we look at as a structural item. You can have people on that platform, and the platform can, essentially, the shims could come out and the platform could drop, and they're still secure with their lifelines. And what we're concerned with is making sure that everybody is secured, and that's why we have the, the German-made double-locking carabiners that does not allow anybody to disconnect while they're on a course. They can only disconnect once they get back on the ground. So the platforms are there so that people can rest, but it is not something that we consider as structural. That's why we do not require engineer drawings on it, and nor does the state.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I did have one question for Mr. Dunford regarding the traffic study. Did you use the data that was actual site visits to compile your estimates?
Hi, good evening. Pat Dunford with VHB. We used combination of multiple field visits by myself, traffic counting done over a three-year period, and a review of transaction data from both Heritage and Adventure Park over that, actually, four-year period. Does that respond?
Yes.
So you, you actually did counts?
Yes, correct.
And so was there any correlation between the actual attendance numbers and the, and the traffic to say, okay, we averaged 2.6 people per car, or anything like that?
We did do a limited vehicle, vehicle occupancy study, where it was in that vicinity of two and a half to three people per car. It was a very limited afternoon, we took a look at that. What we did find initially, the first year we did our studies, there really wasn't a direct relationship between the transactions and the traffic counts, which really didn't make any sense. What we found over the course of the three years was that a lot of the volume entering what you'd call the Adventure Park was actually overflow parking from Heritage, where people would go into Heritage, drive across the street. So what we saw, when they constructed the new lot in 2016, the volume entering what would call Adventure Park dropped off noticeably in 2017, while Heritage Park went up. Now, the businesses likely kept their same level of business, it was just now being accommodated on Heritage Park, and Adventure Park had a much lower traffic generation, is what we concluded.
Okay, that answered the question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, if I could make a point, we, we produced evidence to reflect that actually the reverses to the new facility, the new parking facility was used by visitors to Adventure Park, because it was, it was a cleaner and more apparent parking location in the rest of, that people actually were directed to and went to the paved parking lot across the street as the optimal parking location in lieu of going over the rest of, actually just the optimal.
Yes, please.
In addition to the traffic counting and field observations, we also did a lot of video recording of the activities, and what I saw was a predominant flow of people parking in Adventure Park and then walking off-site towards Heritage. So I'd counter the opposite was what I saw, where the predominant flow was overflow parking on Adventure Park, and then people walking to Heritage. I'm sure there may have been some that went the other way, but by and large, from watching painful amounts of video, it was the other direction.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the camera wasn't trained on the area of the path, which people would go from one side to the other.
All right, we're good.
Sim, did you have any, were you talking or anything about the streets and the parking? Did you wait any for with us? Well, you're always such a wealth of information.
I, I don't know if that's the case here, but it's, I, I believe that the, the memo may have been read into the, the last meeting, which I was not at, correct?
Yes.
Right, all right. You know, we, we in the engineering department, we reviewed the, the traffic assessment. We found that the, the assumptions were, appeared to be all reasonable and inconsistent with what we would be looking for.
The VHB?
The VHB study, correct. We, we noted a, that there were a few, few areas on adjacent streets that I think a little more information could be provided, because these streets are, are not typical streets. They're absent pavement markings, and there's some limited pavement width, things like that out there.
Yeah.
That could be perhaps a little better documented in their, in their report. But all, all in all, it seemed that it was fairly consistent, and VHB had noted that there was very little impact that was predicted.
Okay, thanks.
So could I?
Please.
So the board, I, I think I heard discussion inquiring if there's an opportunity to meet next week. That would be ideal, if that's something that the board is able to do. The 11th is, is not a good date for our team. So if there's any opportunity to meet any day next week except Thursday, we will make ourselves available.
And I will again be gone, I'm leaving in the morning. Okay. Well, is Eric back yet?
You will be here the 11th anyway.
I won't be here the 11th, though, till, till the 19th. How about your schedule?
I'm, I'm on it next week. I don't, when's Eric?
Yeah, I don't know if Eric's back yet.
Didn't he say the 9th?
Do you know when Eric's back?
No, I don't know when Eric's back. We have to, but we have to look and see what space is available. We, we really can't get back here. There's definitely going to be a meeting on Tuesday with the planning board, so Tuesday is out. Possible, the only possible day would be Wednesday, that's school committee night, so if we do have something, it would have to be back here. But we have to check availability for here as well, so.
No, no availability upstairs in the town hall?
It's probably school board night. So we, we don't, I don't, I don't know. We, we, I'm just, we just do Tuesdays, those are the days we focus on.
I'm just, we just do Tuesdays, that's the days we focus on, and we make concession arrangements for Tuesdays, so this is sort of, you know, but if that's, if it's, if that's what the board wants, we could, we could find out definitely tomorrow, and then we have to, we have to advertise all that, we have to make it known appropriately that we're having this meeting on a non-scheduled zoning board day.
I think you'd have to continue it tonight.
Okay, so, the first option, and then we'll have to schedule another night if it's not.
I think you should continue tonight to a date and time and location certain.
Right, well, if you can't make it the 11th, I'm not sure if I can make it the 7th, we might have to go two more weeks out.
It's the 25th.
The 25th, I am, are you guys available?
You'll be back by then?
I will.
Yeah, why don't we just do that? We'll, we're going to leave the special permit open, we're not closing it, and we'll make a schedule for deliberations on June 25th at 6 o'clock here.
I can make that. I've only got one day off next week, and I'm on hourly schedules.
All right, so, but you'll be here the 25th?
Yeah.
June 25th, okay, so that'll work, then, that'll keep-
That's our regular schedule, so, yeah, we know.
We can accept any materials up until the 25th.
Up until that point.
Correct.
I mean, we can still accept them that night, because the permit's still open. Right, it's not closed, and then, you know, if there's anything else, comments that we need from, you know, our-
Yes, the, the meeting will be open on the 25th for information-
But we would expect everyone at that point to keep it real short, so we can get the deliberations done and send everybody home.
So, we're going to the 25th?
All right, so as far as this crowd's concerned, unless you want to sit around for any longer, we're not going to be deliberating, we're not going to be doing anything else regard to this permit tonight, but it will be open and rescheduled for June 25th at 6 o'clock here in this room. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have, we have no new business, we're not deliberating, so I'm out of here.
I have-
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing until June 25th at 6 o'clock. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. All right. Are there any other matters?
Yeah, just let everybody know, we have a minor modification, which we'll be hearing, looking at on June 11th at Sand Hill Street, so we do have something.
Is that the only thing that'll be open that day?
Yeah.
Okay.
And actually, he's away.
Then I'll make a motion to close the public hearing?
No, 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 I'm sorry.
To adjourn tonight's public meeting.
Two hearings in a row today.
Did I do it before?
You need a vacation, Bob.
Oh, I didn't mean to close.
Okay. Hand signals, all right, so you made the motion to adjourn?
I made the motion to close.
Jim's second?
Adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye. Sorry, Chris. We can get down.